Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the work session for March 11th of Wilkes-Barre City Council. Ms. Payne?
We have two items on the agenda. They're both ordinances for second and final reading. First one is number one of 2025, which is an ordinance adding Article Five to Chapter 11. It's for mobile food facilities. And file Council number two of 2025, which is an ordinance amending Article Six of Chapter 28 of the Wilkes-Barre City Code of Ordinances entitled Fee Proration. Do we have any questions on either of those ordinances?
Mobile food facility. I love that.
We made it fancy.
Yeah, big word there.
All right, no questions, then we'll have council presentations. Councilman Belishko.
Just two quick things. Charlie, Mayor, not Charlie the mayor, but Charlie on. The railroad tracks on Barney at Horton, they're getting worse. I know it's an issue with the railroad. I know we went through this before. If we can get, you know, maybe the railroad to let us just patch them up a little bit, make them a little better.
Mike, we can't. Councilman, we cannot patch the railroads. It has to be done through the county. We will notify the county again how bad they're getting, but we don't have the ability to patch them. Okay, because we don't want to throw the rails off in any way.
I understand.
Okay, so it's something we did, you know, same problem up in Dana Street and other areas. Parish Street, we had problems up there. So, once again, we'll get with the county and railroad system and try and get.
So the county is the one that does it?
It's county, yeah.
Yeah. I always thought it was us, but with the railroad's permission.
Yeah, no, it's Luzerne County Railroad. So what we'll do is we'll get with the county. Charlie and I will get with them tomorrow.
Okay.
Charlie or I will get with them tomorrow, and we'll let them know that it was brought up at a council meeting tonight, and that the councilman for that area is asking us to get in touch to try and.
Appreciate that. Thank you much, Mayor.
Sure.
And one other thing, on the same street on Horton, that patch job they did is terrible. Now, I assume they're coming back to finish the job, right? But I've gotten several complaints already.
As soon as they.
It's not high enough to go down.
Yeah, they filled it in three or four different times. They left equipment there. They had a pile. So they've kept it much better than we usually end up with these things at time of year. Hot Patch opens, if I remember correctly, next week. And so they're on it. That's the first thing they're going to do, and then they're going to restore the area, the pavement area.
Beautiful. Thank you, Charlie. That's all.
Mike, I need to ask one more thing. This is a one-two punch you got here tonight.
That's good.
We do have our hot patch machine out, so any council members that want to report or any citizens that want to report areas, streets in the city that need to be, have potholes fixed, please report them to Lisa Sanfilippo. We put that hotline out last year. Very successful. So the patch hotline is effective once again. So please let us know through Lisa, and we'll make sure we get them out. But we're also going to be leasing a second patch machine, so that we'll have two crews out.
Oh, good.
Okay, so please let us know what streets need to be done. I mean, Charlie and I do it every day. We notify them. But, you know, you're in five different districts, so we appreciate your help. Or the people, your constituents throughout the five districts, let us know.
And she's also the graffiti lady, too, right?
Yeah, so Lisa, now she's expanded her abilities.
Portfolio. Her portfolio.
She does pothole reporting.
Is that a certification?
She does graffiti reporting.
I have some graffiti for it, too, but I'll contact her.
She does street signs reporting, that the signs have to replace, and also the veterans banners that we have hanging. She's taking charge of that in addition to all other duties as assigned by Charlie.
That's good. Your Councilman, Mayor?
Yes, I have just one thing. The corner of South Grant and East North Hampton, there's a traffic light. It's not working correctly. It's delayed.
It's delayed?
Yeah, it's not working. Like, people are just running right through it, actually, coming from South Grant to East North Hampton. I witnessed it, and then somebody has told me about it as well. All right, and also, that's all I have for today. That's about it. I'm good.
Councilwoman Clay?
Perfect. So I thanked you for the cleanup on East Chestnut, but now it shows the garbage from the neighbors from Pen Ave. Can we have someone, because the garbage isn't on this side of the railroad tracks. It's closer to their homes. Can we have code enforcement maybe look at that? Then, the home on North Main Street that's up for the code enforcement this week, for the zoning for next week, their dumpster, they did finally get a dumpster, but it's actually sticking into the alleyway. So can we ask them to move it out of the alley? And utility cuts, the one on North Main, all of that is out already. I think they just put, I don't think we did it. I think the utility company, it's out again. So if we could fill that up until they fix it. And also my railroad on North Main, can we have that one? Because Stan tells me about it all the time.
Yeah, both ways. It's pretty, real bad. I mean, you almost have to stop to crawl over it.
Yeah, and I'm good. Thank you.
Good, thank you. And I have three things. One, thank you for the situation that was on South Washington Street. Across from St. Nick's is all quiet on the western front for the last three weeks. It's all been very quiet.
They moved out, as I was saying, it's closed.
Moved out. So the people who live in that neighborhood, thank you very much. Second, this is actually near District Standage, and I just found out this about it. Mead Street School, people who live across the street from it complain to me about all they see is all the garbage cans all the time. They had talked to the owner. The owner was not cooperative. They said, "You're really messing up our neighborhood. Why do we have to look at such ugly stuff? Could you please put them in the rear of the building like we put our trash in the rear of the house?" So if you can check on Mead Street School. And then, two, last night at the Downtown Resident Association, some of the businesses there on Franklin Street complained that the water company comes and doesn't give them any notice, and that they're literally high and dry.
Wow.
And so they're hoping that the utilities can be more cooperative in communicating with the business owners. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman, a couple issues with the water company, if you're okay with that. We have emergency shutdowns that we can't control. But shutdowns that are scheduled ahead of time, Charlie spoke with leadership of the Pennsylvania American Water last week, and they're going to notify businesses in any of the areas where they have scheduled shutdowns so that they'll notify the businesses so they know what's going to be happening from now on. So I know one of the business owners, I won't mention his name, but he came to me about that last week with his son, and we talked about it. We're also going to be doing some other things with signage as far as shutting down the meters and the roads for certain times. There's times that will be listed now, much like we do with the One Valley Sanitary Authority. You know, this street, no parking in this street from seven to three. You know, it'll be that way also when we know that we have, say, something like a parade or something of that nature, so that they'll know when it's going to be shut down.
Great, good. Very good. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
One more thing, Charlie. I know you had mentioned, I requested code enforcement to Forty-Six Barney, if you recall, and you told me a citation was sent. Is there any more follow-up we can do?
Yeah, that's the apartment building, Four to Six Barney?
No, it's not an apartment building, unless it's a duplex.
Okay, Barney Street.
Barney Street, Forty-Six.
Okay, you're talking about when you turn off a wood onto Barney, and it's like the second house?
Uh, no, 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 it'd be down farther.
Okay, because we had a complaint about another property. Okay, we're not talking Four to Six. We're talking Forty-Six.
Forty-Six.
If Forty-Six.
Or Dutch Six.
We're well aware of it. We've removed the garbage twice. They continue to put it out without stickers. We have a, I have a meeting tomorrow with Tim to see where we go from here. The magistrate can't move any more quickly on these because they're appeal periods and they're notice periods. So they're, and it's a problematic property with a problematic owner. So we're very aware of it. We're just trying to figure out a way to do it without just every week going and picking up their garbage for free, which just facilitates them doing it again.
Exactly.
But it's a very complicated problem, unfortunately, with the people who live in there and some other issues. So we're very aware of it. I just met on it today.
I met with the complaint yesterday, and I went by there today to verify, do I know.
Yeah, yeah, it's every week. And if we continue to pick it up, obviously, there's no result. But we have to make sure that, for health reasons, we do. So we're trying to do a couple other things that might move these people along.
Okay, I appreciate it, Charlie. Thanks, Mayor.
Jesse, something?
It's you. So I just read this letter that was in our packet from a resident on North Main Street with they're getting the confusion with Plains. So I actually know there's a couple of other streets that we have this problem. Is there anything that we can do? Because my cousin actually lives on Harriet, and he's had his water shut off when it was supposed to be the one in Plains. He's had prescriptions sent there. So I know he has called me and gone back and forth, and this seems to be now a North Main Street issue.
Yeah, there's several streets. Harriet Street's the one that's in mention, but there's other streets. We did have the county come in, okay, 911 systems.
Yeah.
And we explained to them, there's several streets that are double streets, near the same zip code, 1-8705 or whatever. So we have to work with Plains, as far as the Plains Commissioners, to see what's going to be the resolution there. Okay, for any street to change the address, okay, it's going to be a major, how should I say, annoyance to the people that live there, okay, because everything is based on your address. So whether it's Harriet Street in Plains or Harriet Street in Wilkes-Barre, either one of those residents, if it's changed, it has to be a major change as far as their address. So we did have several people in Lucy Morgan, other people from the 911 and the county, and we talked about what's the best way. Probably the best way is to have another meeting with those folks and maybe Plains Township or other townships that are duplicated and work out an agreement between us. But wherever it's going to lie, people are not going to be happy.
Yeah.
Because for their whole lives, they've had the same address. So we're working on a change, but we did have the county in this past week.
Great, thank you.
Good. Anything else? Good, all right. We're adjourned until Thursday at 6 o'clock, March 13th.
Enjoy the beautiful weather.
Oh, he's a ham. He is a ham. He loves the attention.